And we're in this. I'll fire the end. I was broke too. I can be part of the people. Um, you know. Yeah, I usually drink five bucks. Um, you know, we do a story and then you can read the other story.
Okay.
So secondary, go to the bathroom, brush your teeth, if you sit on your chair. And then story, story. And then. And if you could. And I'll find the way. I mean.
We're going to go on the. You got any thoughts?
Oh, just leave that for me. You don't have. I mean, you can. Oh, I. Because I think. Um. You can do it. I think. Yeah, we do. I'm here. Ollie, get back. Hey. You're not going to be able to stay up here. Yeah.
I don't know why I'm so blurry. Do I look really blurry? Tony.
Michelle.
Michelle.
All right. Well, we can, I'm going to call the meeting to order. April 12th, 2022 at 7:06. If we can all please rise and see the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag. Of the United States of America and to the Republic. For which stands one nation, under God, indivisible. With liberty and justice for all. All right, welcome everyone. Um. We'll start by reading and approving the minutes. Our last meeting was on March 22nd.
I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from March 22nd, 2022.
And I'll second that motion.
Thank you, Ms. Karris. Any discussion? All in favor of approving the minutes as written, Ms. Karris, Ms. Shrela, Ms. Dan and myself, motion carries. Um, all right, Mr. Parentazi, could you walk us through the bills for tonight, please?
Certainly, Madam Chair. The bill roll this evening is for $602,058.14. Obviously, the significant portion of that is the third and final payment to the Swampside Public Schools of $533,099.3. And that represents the entire amount for now that we will pay when they get that for educating our 7th through 12th graders. And this year, the system that we put in place five years ago has definitely paid dividends for for us in terms of we have increased the number of high school students at Swampscott by seven students during the course of the year. So we would be right now scrambling to seven times whatever their per capita is. At the same time, those seven students spread out among the hundreds of students that some at Swampscott High School really don't make a significant difference in their cost. So it's really good for for both of us. As always, I would like to point out that staff members are on the bill roll. Christine Casos has two checks coming going to her 5313. That's for QuickBooks and $45 for constant contact. Both of those organizations do 100% of their business via credit card and internet. And we don't have a credit card, so Mr. Andrews, myself and Ms. Casos typically just put it on our own and then we and then we get reimbursed. The only other bill I think that would be of interest is the Amanti Bill 2200 hours. We had a glycol leak in the in the workroom above the hallway right outside my office. And they came and they stayed until it was repaired. It was in the winter and the glycol is a chemical, even though it's watered down, like it's like the antifreeze in our cars. You really don't want to get it anywhere. So they did a great job of taking care of it very, very quickly. And I think everything else is pretty typical. A lot of food service payments this this time. Stop and Shop had multiple payments and Seaside Pizza also had multiple payments. So, Madam Chair, with your permission, unless a member of the school committee has a question, I'd like to respectfully ask that a member of the school committee make a motion to approve the bill rolls of the 12th of April for $602,058.14.
I'll make a motion to approve the bill roll dated the 12th of April and the amount of $602,058.14.
I'll second the motion. It's. We have a quick question, Mr. Parentazi. For the bills to Seaside, do those then subsequently get reimbursed by the government for the free lunch program that we have?
Yes.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Yep. Yeah, that's ending, as you know. So we've already had our preparatory meeting. We will be sending out the free and reduced lunch forms again, like we have for many, many years. And our free and reduced lunch count will be dramatically lower. And parents will, of course, have to then pay for lunch. So right now, our lunch total is about 150. My guess is like prior to COVID-19, pre-pandemic, the number was in the neighborhood. Since we went to Seaside Pizza, the number had climbed to about 70 per day. So I'm not sure, since the children have been eating the the really pretty good food from Seaside, whether more parents will want their children to have the school lunch than prior to the pandemic. But that's that's the the math. Later in the in the meeting, I'll talk to you about contracts, and that's one of the ones that I'll be talking about.
Thank you.
Other questions regarding the bill roll? All in favor of approving the bill roll as outlined? And Beth, you could abstain since you weren't there for the discussion, right? I think that would be appropriate. Um, so for yes, and Beth is abstaining.
Welcome.
Hi, Beth.
Uh, okay. Um, moving on to um, old business, Mr. Parentazi, do you want to start with the COVID-19?
Certainly, Madam Chair. It's my pleasure. Thank you. In the town of Nahat, we have three confirmed cases by the public health nurses. However, I am led to believe by the the public health nurse that that number is grossly underreported because home tests are everywhere. This is the number that that is reported to the health department when somebody goes somewhere and gets a PCR test. So she said the number could could be at this time, she used the number 30 as high as 30 in the community. We don't know, obviously. Our nurse, Mrs. Delicio, does an amazing job of communicating with parents when their child is absent, you know. Have you used the test? Do you need a test? Have you had a PCR, you know? Are the tests positive? So we have a much better handle on our students than the public health department at this time really has on the general population because of the really good communication between the parents, guardians and the our our nurse, Mrs. Delicio. However, I will tell you that we have an interesting case. We do have a case of COVID-19 in the school right now. And it's an interesting story. For those of you who haven't seen the
Yeah, the weekly graph.
There's eight weeks of nothing. And now we have a case. Um, and it is a preschool student who, interestingly, didn't feel well. They their last day of school was Monday, the 4th of April. They did not test positive until the 11th. But that, again, the absolute wonderful cooperation between parents, guardians and our nurse, that child did not come to school prior to being identified. So there's absolutely no transmission, once again, in the school. This one was interesting because our tests were showing the home tests, rather, the antigen tests were showing negative, and it wasn't until the child had a PCR several several days, obviously, almost a week after they didn't feel good. The difference that the nurses explained to me today is that this new variant tends to run through families 100% eventually. But oftentimes, not at the same time. So it's kind of interesting. I guess every variant has its own profile. And, you know, as soon as we learn something about one of the variants, the variant mutates and we're learning again. So it's keeping us on our toes.
One of the things that we learned, we had a lecture on it, MGH, from the infectious disease doctors as well, was that with the newer variants, this one and one just before, testing positive about five days into symptoms is pretty common and testing negative despite symptoms earlier in the illness is pretty common.
Right.
It's a pretty common story.
Yeah, that's that's what the public health nurse explained to me today. So.
Masking if you're symptomatic and, you know, Miss Elizabeth does a wonderful job of following that.
Which makes all the communication between parents, guardians and Mrs. Delicio critical. Absolutely hugely important. And it keeps us all healthy here. So parents and guardians will get a message this later in the week from Mr. Andrews that we are asking parents and guardians to test their children on the 17th, Sunday, the 17th, and then again on Sunday, the 24th, before they come back. All too well, we know that, you know, this test that we're giving is is one that is not nearly as as predictable as the the PCR, but I mean, it is what we have. So if any parents, guardians need tests, we have them. The town has them. We have them. I guess by now we all have them. But the kids will be going home again before Friday. We do have a high absentee rate over the last two weeks, starting last Monday, the 4th of April. We have had between seven and 16 students absent every day. Our typical is a handful, five-ish. However, we do know from parents, guardians, symptoms, talking with the public health nurse and our nurse, that those students, with the exception of the one that I detailed to you earlier, it's the flu or viral illnesses. And I guess one way of saying it is it's the the post-mask era. Particularly with the the highest caseload of absences is in our preschool and kindergarten. And if you think about what's happened, you know, typically what happens is children leave their home, they go to pre-K, they go to daycare, they go to kindergarten, and as as you know, as we all know from our parenting days, they get sick. And they build up their immunity. Well, our kindergarten students and our preschool students had masks on until recently. So they weren't exposed as much. Plus, in my opinion, when kids who are very young are wearing masks, they don't put their hands in their mouth. So they don't pick up bacteria or viruses, put their hands in their mouth and then, you know, either give it to themselves or then take what they have and give it to somebody else. So that's probably what's going on. I'm no epidemiologist, I'm just using common sense. We have had the peak, however, it seems to be dropping now. And obviously, we have our our eyes on what happens immediately after a spring break. And you saw the results or you can see the results of our pool testing, which will come out yet tomorrow. Our pool testing has continues to be negative. The one student who we know is positive in preschool wasn't in the pool because last Tuesday, because they weren't in school. So we still have a flat line on our pool testing. And, Madam Chair, that's about it for the update.
Great, thank you. We had talked a little bit about if things remain stable. You know, having an update after April on how things are after school break, but maybe if things remain stable after that, that we could move to COVID-19 updates being more as needed.
Madam Chair, I spoke to the two nurses today about it, and they had a suggestion, if I may be so bold. They said, why don't you just make it part of your report when necessary?
Yeah.
So take it off the agenda. And whenever I need to update you, I'm meeting, I'm actually meeting with the nurses now every other week, but on the Tuesday of our school committee meetings. So.
Sense, that's great.
Yeah, so I'll always have a very recent update and I'll know when I have to, you know, bring your attention to the conditions in in the school.
You know, I think if other committee members are comfortable with that, you know, after the break, it could be, you know, on the superintendent's report as as an as-needed item.
Absolutely. Sounds good.
Yeah, great.
All right. Um, then one new discuss, so we had, we had talked about the school committee agenda. And Mr. Parentazi actually holds what the school committee agenda is outlined as in the in the policy and then what our current school committee agenda is, which is pretty similar, but I don't know, Mr. Brandozzi, you didn't send a copy of it to everybody, so I could describe it if you want, or you could describe it?
It's in the in the.
Oh, it is in there. Okay.
Yep, the Madam Chair, the only thing the rest of the school committee members did not see is that comparison, I mean, for you. They have, they have a copy of the policy, so if the school committee wishes to return to the traditional agenda, everyone, members of the school committee know what it is.
I'm looking for it in the packet. Um.
It's the third page.
Oh, yeah, the third, there we go.
For B.
You know, similarly, we would call to order, read and approve the minutes. But then, you know, right after that, acknowledge visitors and and go straight to community correspondence, which, you know, I think makes a lot of sense for people that are joining, meeting to speak early on, you know, for the most part. And then we would move to the bills. Basically, it's just, you know, putting the acknowledgement of visitors and community correspondence before payment of bills.
I think it makes a lot of sense. I think at one point, we had adjusted it to have community correspondence after some of the text of the meeting, like some of the meeting, when there was more going on that people feel like they felt like they wanted to be updated on before speaking.
Right.
But I totally respect the order that, you know, traditionally had been recommended or or, you know, outlined.
And so because of the policy, I don't know that we necessarily need to vote on it, but it might make sense at the next meeting, move back to that. Michelle, were you going to say something?
Um, when when I had talked about the agenda, and I don't know if this would go more under just some general things to cover. You know, we had talked about student achievements and we had talked about like the goals and monitoring and professional development. And so I feel like, you know, and this all kind of came about for me in doing the evaluation because I thought for a lot of the evaluation, I didn't know the progress that was being made. And so it was hard, hard for me to evaluate some aspects for the superintendent's evaluation because you know, I didn't, I don't know, like the feedback about professional development and how that's working. So there were a lot of questions on there. And I think if it's part of our job to to have that evaluation, I think part of our school committee agenda should include opportunity to have Mr. Parentazi present that to us. If that makes sense.
Yeah, and I think definitely, you know, we had talked to Mr. Andrews about student achievement being a consistent part of the principles report. I'm not sure how to move other items into the agenda, but.
I think it's like based on this, it could just be part of the superintendent's report. You know, to to kind of go over the points of his goals that are set out through through the year and and how those are being achieved. You know, because whenever, you know, just in general work, whenever I evaluate somebody, I know what their review criteria is and what, being new to the school committee, I really didn't recognize that part of it until I had to do the evaluation. And so I think that moving forward, we should have points to review to to have that information presented to us, so we if that makes sense.
But what if it were something that were, you know, scheduled kind of quarterly or, you know, a few times a year? I think, you know, this is some. What if it were something that were, you know, scheduled kind of quarterly or, you know, a few times a year? I think, you know, this is something that from my America election, Mr. Parentazi does tend to update us on about what the content of our professional development days, you know, what the schedule for professional development days entails and what kinds of activities are going on. But if we had it kind of scheduled into our, you know, expectations of the year, maybe that would be good, but perhaps not at every meeting since the school's working on.
Yeah, and that's generally, you know, kind of what normally happens, you know, in a regular job is you don't meet every week for achievements. You just, you you do have it somewhat, but I think we should have it set out. It's maybe the the last meeting of the quarter, you know, review something in terms of the goals. So that would be my suggestion.
Sure, I think, Mr. Parentazi, I think historically you've kind of, you've done that, but less formally, or is that correct? So you've you've actually incorporated it, but.
That is correct. So since COVID hit, what we've been doing is, in the principal's report, we have been inserting the professional development topics. So the school members of the school committee can see how we are doing professional development and keeping our staff apprised of the most current instructional strategies and designs. Mr. Andrews and I actually met about this recently. And we had the same suggestion as Ms. Dam just did, that rather than go through the process of recreating these traditional agenda, that as part of the superintendent's report, I would constantly put in a principal's report. And now I will do, I hear three things. I hear academic achievement, student success, and professional development. And so we'll make reports on those. And I just heard Ms. Sherlock's recommendation of quarterly, which makes sense. It may be a little bit more often than that. So for example, maybe one in the beginning of the year, you know, like a kickoff and then maybe with the progress reports and the and the report cards, and then another one after each of the all-day professional developments, we want to make sure you know what's going on when the children are home and the staff is working. And then one for MCAS. So if you, if you kind of send me your your thinking on it, I can put a schedule together and and synthesize and summarize it with Mr. Andrews and give it back to you.
As part of the principal's report, I really enjoyed, you know, whenever there's iReady testing or, you know, standardized testing, we'd like, we'd love to hear, you know, where that after you have the results compiled, if you can share that as part of the principal's report, I think would be great.
Well, then you're gonna love.
What you have been doing, which is great, so.
Then you're, then you're gonna love Mr. Andrews' report tonight.
And I think the only other thing I think that we should be apprised of on a quarterly basis would be the budget. Just because it's part of our job to monitor that. And so I think, you know, to get a report on that would be great.
Like where things stand with the projected budget and where we're at.
Yeah.
The, there's absolutely no problem doing that. The first time I do that, it's going to be a long presentation. Because the documents we get with all the data in it, you, we really need to spend some time. And I'm kind of thinking, Madam Chair, that we may want to have a special meeting for that.
Like before a regular meeting, kind of like we do for the
Yeah, we may want to have a a budget review session so that we can go over the various complexities of the budget. Because you know, the numbers of the the percentage of the amount spent and the the percent left in each of the budget line items is deceiving. Because some of them are perfectly parallel with the with the percentage of time in the school year. So that would be, for example, salaries. They they are, it's like clockwork. There's, there's twenty-six pays for year-round people. There's twenty-one for people who worked the school year. But then, as a real clear example is the three payments of $533,000. They make a huge difference to the bottom line of the budget, you know, when I give that. So perhaps, I mean, it's up, it's up to the members of the school committee, perhaps a separate one or perhaps one, if you want, when I don't want to have another night, you know, we can, we can bury it in a school committee meeting, but just recognizing the fact that it will be a longer meeting.
Yeah, I mean, I think that having a better understanding of the budget, I mean, you do a wonderful job at presenting it when it's time for us to vote upon it. But we're my sense, now, I don't have any comparison point, but my sense is that we're really spoiled by the fact that you are really good at the budget. And I, and I worry about, you know, you know, what happens when the inevitable comes and and you decide that you'd rather be hanging out in Florida than school committee meetings. And so I'd love to have a better understanding of the budget. You know, if you could take the time to teach us in the front, I think it would make a big difference.
Absolutely, it'd be my pleasure. And I'm saying twenty, thirty minutes. Ms. Cowers probably can help me with her background.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I am more than happy to help, especially if it's explaining like accrual versus cash basis accounting.
And and ours is, ours is simply a deficit-down system. All we do is we, we start with a number and and we, as we spend, it goes down. The problem is, in terms of understanding, there are going to be certain months where you say, oh, jeez, it's only the third month of the the school year, and we've already spent sixty-five percent of the money. That's a problem. And so, you know, we can dive into some of those things.
Yeah, that'd be wonderful.
Yeah, so let me, academic achievement, budget, professional development, was there a fourth one?
I know Beth is dying to say something.
I really, I'm never this polite, but I you know what, it's not working out. It's not working out for me. So I'm, I just had a couple, a couple of thoughts. Tony, what do you think of what else to add there? But I, one is on the meeting. The only question I have with changing the meeting structure, I agree wholeheartedly with, let's not subject people to waiting through half a meeting that they don't have to wait through, especially parents, come on, but and teachers that have to prep. But, but I do, there is, I'm spending a lot of time thinking about the democratic process these days. And there is something to being able to react to things that we've talked about that I think are substantive, that we would inadvertently potentially be cutting off. And I have a proposal. So but just to like give one example, like, let's say at, you do public comment and somebody comes in and says, you know, and gives their their opinion on something. And then I say something later that people vehemently disagree with, right? There's no opportunity for them to say like, well, Beth made a ridiculous comment, we want to take issue of it, right? And they should, in a, in a more, you know, in a process, you know, we really collectively care about being democratic. So I, my wondering is, is there a way that could, are we allowed if there, you know, we know, it's a tiny island, like, we know when there's conversation that we think is going to happen mostly. And so I wonder if, could we, on those nights, potentially put those conversational items first and then allow for some public comment in case people want to disagree with whatever one of us might have said. So that was one question. And then I had a comment on, on the academic report after that, but I'll stop, see if there's any pushback.
We can, right, as a committee, we can, at the beginning of the meeting, we can always talk about we had adjusting the order of items on the agenda for the night. So we can in in real time move that along. And sometimes what we've done in the, in the normal world, when there's a live audience, if we look around and see that there are people in the audience, we might say, hey, it looks like there are a bunch of people here. And knowing what's going on, like you're alluding to, either it's something people are bursting at the seams to say at the beginning, or we move it to later, but we can definitely have that flexibility.
All right, great. So the other thing is, I really, I love the idea, Michelle, I love that you're lifting having academics be a regular part. I totally agree. I think the quarterly meeting, you know, quarterly makes sense. I, I do think that having Mr. Andrews speak to a piece of this and Mr. Parentazi, you two speak to a piece, there, you just have different lenses around different pieces of the academic program. And Mr. Andrews is closer to the ground, you know, I hope that's okay to say, and may be able to give some color and light to some of the places where, you know, you know, achievement is never like a monodimensional or linear conversation. So Kevin is going to know like how the teachers are viewing a certain set of data and how the, you know, other constituencies and how things look different at different times, you know, whereas I think then you could go, you, Tony, could go broader, right? So like, I just, I do think that, I don't, I'm not going to dictate, obviously, it's not my place to dictate, like, who does what, but but like, I do think there is space for both of you to give a really great, deep report on that. And then I would add to that, that I think twice a year around things like maybe staff surveys and like iReady data and other things that that don't come out monthly, it might be good to allow a little bit more space to go deeper, do a deeper dive, certainly MCAS once a year. So that we can really get a good historic comparative story about how the the children are doing, I think, how the students are doing, would be, would be great. I, and I also want to vote for having a separate meeting for budget once a year, because I think, A, there's budget aficionados out there that may not come necessarily to school committee meetings all the time. And it allows us to go a little deeper, you know, into a budget, I think, to have a separate meeting and, you know, and really get into the sauce of, you know, what you were, what we would want to, you know, get into with everything that has, that the budget is related to. I also love budgets, so I think it's subjective, I just think that they're, so, you know, they tell such a story of a school system.
Yeah, I think that. Thanks, Beth. The, you know, the deeper discussion that probably the biggest discussion about budget is the separate meeting that we have before we vote on it, that we just had recently. And I mean, it would be more detailed than just the bill roll that we go through at a regular meeting, but so somewhere in the middle, it sounds like, you know, where do we stand in terms of our projected budget? And I think that that conversation will obviously be more detailed than a bill roll, but not quite as detailed. Other than the, it sounds like the very first time that we go through this process, it'll be probably equally as detailed, maybe half an hour for that agenda item to go through the update on where we stand with our budget. Is that correct, Mr. Parentazi?
Yeah, I, I think there's, there's two budget concepts that I think have to be separated. One is the development of the next fiscal year's budget, and we spent a lot of time on that. I start bringing that to you in November.
Before, yeah.
And every meeting, I think maybe I skipped one or two because we didn't change the numbers. But we have discussions. But then there's the discussion of where we stand in the current year's budget. And a little bit deeper understanding perhaps of the budget in general, regardless of which which year it is. So that when I make my presentations to develop the new budget for the following year and we, I make, we make a presentation about where we stand, the school committee members will have a deeper understanding of, you know, what it means. You know, how, how come the salary schedule, the salary line item only went up $20,000 when we know we're giving people a 2% raise? You know, what, what is that? You know, and, you know, I, I kind of give it to you in a narrative as we go along. You know, we talk, I talked about breakage. I told, you know, I talked about that with the finance committee. But I, it may be better to kind of put it all together, answer any questions you have, and then walk out after that conversation with a little bit better understanding. And also, a, an opportunity to continuously ask questions as we, as we go forward.
Yeah, I think that, I think that would be perfect. Thank you. It might be a good point, since we're talking about the meeting structure and you know, sort of tailing off of that. I'm, I met with Kristen, I mean, I spoke with Kristen Taylor today at the town hall, and we can, we can meet in person officially. So there's two different proposals on what that would look like. And I wanted to discuss it with the group before I circle back around to the town hall and let them know where we'd like to meet. We could meet in the main, you know, meeting area in the town hall, which the the system to allow us to broadcast the meeting is up and running, it's fixed. So we would be able to share the meeting with people that want to watch, but wouldn't be able to participate. So they'd be able to watch it and not participate it. Here are the two, you know, sort of touches to that. The main meeting hall is not set up for Zoom. We wouldn't be able to use Zoom in that meeting room, and we they don't currently have somebody available on Tuesday evenings to do the broadcasting. That's not to say that they couldn't find someone. The other option is that there's the smaller meeting rooms downstairs where they are set up for Zoom. So anybody could log on, you know, similar to our current structure and participate remotely. And even, you know, participate in community correspondence if they were remoting in that way. You know, for people that don't have internet connections and would typically view it on the TV, that would not be an option in those smaller meeting rooms downstairs. And, you know what, and I should have asked her what the exact number is, but the space is more limited. So if we felt like it was going to be a really big meeting, we would be limited by space. And you know, Lauren and Tony and Kevin could probably speak to, you know, pre-pandemic, how big that in-person group would get. I don't, I don't get the sense that it's a huge group, even when we have something that's you know, potentially relevant for people to participate. And I, I think that if there is the opportunity that they could participate by Zoom, some people would still probably choose to do that, but I would look to you to see.
The biggest number of participants I can remember in person might have been ten at most. You know, pandemic and remote broadcasts definitely grew, drew a bigger crowd, you know, when we had things to talk about, but I don't remember more than ten. Do you guys?
Never. When we were, when we were dealing with the transgender issues about four years ago, I'd say seven.
Right, still, still less than ten, yeah.
Yeah, it was the the maximum number we ever had. So I think the, the committee room would be plenty big enough for that.
I guess the one thing we'd have to keep in mind is that while that's the historic precedent, it would be lovely if more people do want to come, it would be welcome. And so, you know, if we kind of limit ourselves to a smaller room going forward and something changes in the way that the community behaves and people feel, you know, the desire to come, I would hate to not be able to fit people. I don't think it's very likely in the near future, but you know, if that were to change, we could always, we could always make decisions differently in the future.
Right. I mean, I don't know how busy the town hall gets in terms Right. I mean, I don't know how busy the town hall gets in terms of, you know, um. Meetings and, you know, running concurrently, but, um. I don't, I don't get the sense that there's a ton of meetings that run concurrently, so we might be able to, if we felt like we needed to, as long as we gave adequate. Um, notice, we could move to the bigger meeting hall for a meeting or at a certain point for meetings moving forward.
We used to do it in the reverse order. We used to just move downstairs whenever we'd have a conflict, right, Tony?
Yes.
So, um, I'm sure it could work in reverse.
Madam Chair, the only other factor I think we should recognize, or you should recognize before you make your decision. Is that the sound quality in the, um, the big room is awful. And people have told me, even when it's broadcast, it's real hard to hear what people are saying at home. And frankly, for those of us who have, um, lots of experience on the planet, it's hard to hear even when you're in person. And I, the committee room would be much better of in terms of sound.
Um, you know, I think that obviously we should vote on this. Um, so I'd be happy to take a motion to move our meetings to in-person. And a proposal on the location. Much that could be.
Very happy to make a motion for in-person meetings and the committee room sounds wonderful to me.
Can I have a second?
I'll I'll second it.
Thanks, Michelle. And just as a point of, um, clarity, it it would be a hybrid meeting. So it would be in-person with Zoom for people to, um, join, non-committee members to join if they would desire to do so. Although theoretically in a bind, committee members could do that, but prefer to be in person. Um.
Can I just ask a quick question before we take a vote, Gina? Um, what, and I'm sorry if I missed this, but what happened with having it at the school? What was the problem? In the last meeting about having it in the school?
There is, I don't think that there's a problem with having it in school, just, um, because it's a town, uh, committee. I think the preference is to have it at the town hall. Is that correct?
I think that's the historical precedent because it's a town committee.
What are your thoughts, Beth?
Um, I mean, my thought at the last meeting was, I had asked a question about the last meeting because I I went. And remember, I'm the rookie here in terms of learning about, um, you know, protocol, but, uh, I was like, school committee, why wouldn't we have it at school? Parents are comfortable in the school, or comes in the school, Mr. Parentozzi and Mr. Andrews wouldn't have to leave the school. I don't know, just seems. Uh, for me, I'm probably missing major things that are important, but it seemed like a no-brainer. And, um, and I know we've had it at the town hall. I think there was something too about, I thought Mr. Parentozzi said that. It would be easier from a, um, interactive standpoint because there's smart boards and whatnot at the school, that the technology might be better, but maybe I, I don't know, maybe I was tired. I missed. Um, and I I didn't hear us correctly and I'm missing something. Apologies for that. I'm also going to be in front of a computer in literally five minutes, so I apologize for being in the dark here.
That's okay. Um, actually, the sound coming from your, uh, your limousine is very good. Uh, the.
I know, it's deep.
The actuality is that we have a room right now set up. As a, uh, special education IEP meeting room.
Yeah.
And we've been doing it, um, for quite a while, um, almost a year. And we have a computer set up so that. If the committee chose to go in person, we would be sitting in room 201. And then anyone who wanted to be, uh, to access it from home can do so. Uh, Mr. Andrews has actually started to do staff meetings and faculty meetings that way in that room.
Hybrid.
Yeah, hybrid, because traditionally if we would have our, uh, meetings on a Tuesday. And if somebody was a part-time staff member and they didn't work on Tuesday, they obviously would not drive in. Uh, for a a 45-minute meeting. Now they don't have to. They can stay home or they can, you know, view it on their phone if they're in transit. So we would be ready to to do that basically seamlessly. I'm not, I'm not sure it's better. I'm just saying, you know, we know how to do that.
Ma- Madam Chair, if I may, uh, add, I do know there is, um, precedent for us having the meetings, for you all having your meetings at the school. Um, I've seen VHS tapes of the school committee meeting at the school. Uh, and so, um, it's happened before.
You know, um, not contiguous to either my or Mr. Andrews, uh, employment, uh, a while ago.
And Mr. Andrews, would there be any problem with, um, you know, any security concerns at all of having an evening meeting like that at this school? I don't believe so. Is it?
No, James, James would be happy to accommodate us.
Okay. Do you, do you as administrators have a preference as to where we meet? Is it easier for you at one location or the other?
It it is, it is nice to, you know, stay put, um, and the room is large and would be able to accommodate more people than. Um, than the, uh, town hall would, um, in the, one of those, uh, other rooms we talked about.
I personally like to keep it as easy as possible for the school administration. Um, you know, we all leave our homes no matter what to go to a meeting, so. Wherever it seems like it's easiest for the school administrators would be fine with me.
That's a good point.
Madam Chair, if I could ask a question, the Zoom setup at, in the committee rooms, are you aware of how that works? Or is there a computer already there or would we have to learn how to do it or anything?
I actually don't know the answer to that, sorry.
No, that's okay. Um. My gut is. Uh, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead, Tony.
No, that's all right.
I was gonna say, what if we started out at the school and then we see how it goes?
Thank you.
Uh, actually, I'm glad I I yielded to you because that's exactly what I was going to say. Much better coming from you. Um, if we started the school and, um, we see what happens.
Yeah, there's, there's no keys. We, we have keys to the school already. We don't have to worry about that anyway. So, yeah, sure.
So that was the only other question is that once the, when we have a meeting, the school will be open. So people in the community that wanted to join the meeting would be able to.
Absolutely.
Anyway, okay, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, if it's, I'd be able to, um, set up the technology and make sure everything worked, y- you know, more easily if it were at the school. In terms of Zoom.
So if we agreement with that, would the motion be to, um, move to meetings in-person with a Zoom option for non-committee members? At the Johnson School?
Sure, that sounds good. Do we have to list the location in our vote? Or could we just say in-person as a hybrid model and then less officially have our location so that we could change it if needed in the future?
Yeah, it doesn't, I don't think it has to be a part of our vote, but it'll have to be a part of our announcement for the next meeting.
Okay. So should I just change it to motion to move meetings to a hybrid model? Both in-person and Zoom option and just leave it at?
Yeah. That'd be great. Any other discussion? Um, all in favor?
Thanks to the administration for, um, helping with logistics for all that. Thank you.
Um, all in favor of the motion as outlined, Ms. Karas, Ms. Sherlock, Ms. Dan. Ms. Anderson and myself. All right, motion carries unanimously. Yay. This time, we're not going to undo it because we got the all all clear from the town hall. Um, and then was there something else you wanted to discuss about the school committee policy manual update? Or is that just if we were going to change the agenda?
Yeah, I've, I've been, I've been threatening this so long, I thought I'd make an announcement that the school committee. Policy is updated, all 429 official pages. It is on the website under district, under, uh, school committee policies, which is the second column in the, in the window. And, um. I want to thank, um. Chris Patzos, uh, and also Connie, who, uh, initially helped us a lot. But Chris did the, the real heavy lifting in the bulk of the work. And I wanted to remind the school committee, uh, unless you all tell me otherwise. That our plan is to make an appendix of all the policies to get updated. And so what that would allow us to do is keep the policy manual as it is. With its numbered pages and then just have a sheet at the beginning of it, a page in the beginning. That says new policies, dates, and then put the appendix. Um, after that, so that the old policy would remain in the, in the policy manual. But anyone who would be looking, uh, at the policy manual, the first thing they would come. Uh, to would be the appendix, um, index. So it would, it seems that way. Um, I can tell you it was a, it's, it's going to be. Extremely time-consuming to renumber. The policy manual every time we put a new policy in, or we change a policy from three pages to two or four. Um, and I would, I would suggest the, um, the right way to do it is to do that every. Three to five years, not to try to keep it updated.
So your, your idea is that we, there is a time, a point in time where you would combine all of the appendices to update that, what, the one policy?
Yes.
I think that sounds fair.
It's not continuously every time you need to update it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, it looks good. Chris did a great job. And, uh, I can count to 429 now, so. It used to be 11. So the, um. The last item on my report, Madam Chair, is the preschool program finances.
Yeah.
And I, and, um, I had spoken to the chair about this, uh. Last week. Um. We have begun to contact parents who had, um, significantly, um, arreared, um. Amounts. So, uh. Yeah, and you may, and as my email told you, when I updated you about it, you may hear from them. I'm not sure if you did. But I do want to tell you that, uh, since Monday, we've gotten, uh, $7,666, or $60. Of, of payments that have, uh, brought three of the six accounts. Much closer to, uh, current. We still have, um, $11,007 outstanding from six students and their families. But we're in obviously almost $1,000 better shape than we were on Thursday. Um, so I'm going to do a couple of things. None of them are dramatic. First of all, we're not going to raise the rates or do penalties. I mean, if somebody is having difficulty paying a bill, it never made any sense to me. To increase the amount. Yeah. Um, that's not going to help me pay the bill. That's going to actually. Be a detraction from me wanting to pay the bill. So, uh, when, um, we're going to begin to ask for a payment upfront. Of one month when someone starts their program. And what we have found, looking at the data, is that students who come in the middle of the year. Um, and don't pay the very small, um, registration fee. They tend to fall behind much faster. Because the parents and guardians never have given the school district any money. So what we're going to do is, um. Ask when someone registers to pay a month upfront. Uh, we have, um, two students who moved here. Uh, in the middle of the year and they've never made a payment. And, um, one of them, um. Is several thousand dollars. So that, hopefully, that will, uh, take care of that. The other thing we're doing is we're contacting them personally. Uh, I want to thank Mr. Andrews, who's making the, uh. Those calls and reminding them of the amount rather than just sending the monthly bill with the amount that's owed. So, um, as I said, it's already paid dividends. Uh, the amount that is over 30 days went from $16,657 to $11,000 in two days. Uh, however, Mr. Andrews is aware of the people that we contacted last week. And they still haven't made a payment and we'll, uh, right after vacation, we'll contact them again.
Thank you.
We being the royal way.
Yeah, yeah.
Mr. Andrews.
Um, Tony, if, if, if a, if in good faith, a, a parent either at the beginning of their time in, uh, with a student in pre-K. You know, thinking about that one month in advance, or. Now behind says to us, you know, the royal us, like, are, are, I can't pay it. I can't afford, I don't have that kind of money on hand. Could I pay it in installments? Is that an option for parents that are economically struggling?
I'm going to answer that question because it's an outstanding question with a simple sentence. We never say no.
Great, great. That's what I was hoping.
We make it work.
Okay.
If a parent says any combination of things, we allow the child to come. What we are addressing here is people who just don't communicate with us. You know, we have parents, for example, um, who work for companies that pay for daycare. And some of those, uh, individuals sometimes are three months in arrears. Because it takes time for the paperwork. From the, from us to the parent, from the parent to the company, from the company to whatever process they have in place. Uh, we're fully aware of that and we, we never give those individuals any kind of grief. There are those that I'm looking at my sheet who owe, uh, because of that, a significant amount of money, but they're not on my list to call because we know why. So we're, we're, um, we're always reasonable.
That's great.
I have reduced the fees at times when parents, um, are in real financial difficulty, short term.
Yeah. Um, I think that's great. And as long as we communicate, like, if you got a problem with paying, talk to, talk to whoever at the school. I think that that then covers, A, that's the ethical and humane thing to do, particularly these times. Second, it covers, it covers us. Um, and, and also I think just getting to know, you know, some different families that have come into Naha and over the past, you know, year and a half, sometimes not at the very beginning of the year. I think that sometimes there is some language stuff and understanding stuff. So I think having multiple at-bats with families that, you know, may not. Um, you know, completely, um, understand the messaging would be important. And then we're small enough that you know where to apply like pressure and where to apply help. So that's what I was just looking for.
Yeah.
And we, we also have the, um, preschool, um, I forgot what it's called, where you can apply if you're, if you qualify financially.
Yep.
Voucher program, voucher, that's what I was saying.
We are now an official voucher, um, program. Um, but there are, there are definite, um, restrictions. And rigid guidelines in terms of income and the, um. the typical parent guardian in our community does not fall within the guidelines of the state voucher system, although we have some.
And if I may add, Madam Chair, the amount of paperwork could can be onerous for the family.
Right.
Especially if they're if they're new to town, have moved often. And so that's but but at the same time, we keep that in mind, and as the superintendent mentioned, welcome them nonetheless.
And we do offer help with the paperwork, too. There is there is a state contact that we have who helps families.
Mr. Parentozzi, do you want to move right into the facility update?
Certainly. I just want the members of the school committee to know that we are waiting for someone to do the graffiti removal on the brick wall on the side of the cafeteria that's been there since Christmas, and we will get that off ASAP. We tried to do it ourselves, but we we actually we need professional assistance on that. In your packet, you see our beautiful new cafeteria, water fountain, and bottle filling stations. So that now means we have three of them. Our next step would be to put one on the first floor. The you also have in label five B, the a diagram of the two air exchange fans that we will put up in the cafeteria. That work will begin on June twentieth, and it will go to approximately July eighth. These two fans are twenty-six feet across. And they rotate very slowly, but obviously, because they're so large, they move a tremendous amount of air. They will make our cafeteria much more comfortable, and they're silent. They will make our cafeteria much more comfortable in the warm weather and in the cool weather because all the heat was up at the at the roof line. So it's a very good start to redistributing our our heat in a better way and cooling our students, staffs, and our visitors when they're in the cafeteria. Five C is the gym roof update. The MSBA date has passed, and the onerous paperwork was including votes by the Board of Selectmen and approval by you. So I am going to start that process in September. The it's going to be a two-step process. The first one will be to get a professional company to come in and evaluate the roof. And that's going to be in the neighborhood of twenty-five thousand dollars, which, if we're approved and when we're approved for MSBA reimbursement, that would be in the list of costs that would be reimbursed. We are looking, however, at a maximum reimbursement of around thirty to thirty-five percent because of our socioeconomic status in the community. The one of the reasons I put it off is, well, there's several reasons. One is that construction costs are ridiculously high right now. And we're hoping that the materials costs will drop and labor costs will drop, although labor will probably not drop significantly. We found out when the people came to inspect, in order to give the evaluation bid, that the roofs, the roof will need another layer of insulation on the exterior, and therefore, the cost basically tripled. So it's going to be in the neighborhood of four to five hundred thousand dollars. And I recommend that we get an OPM, an owner project manager, to walk us through the complexities with MSBA. And that in itself is time consuming because I have to put that on the street and get bids. So it it got a lot more complex than having a roofing company come in and put a new roof on. And that's why I'm delaying it.
Excuse me, Mr. Parentozzi, did you say that there was another thing that we should have in our packet, five C? Because I I don't see it in in mine. Oh, that's five. Okay, that's five E. Okay. Okay.
Yeah. And that gives you that gives you a real sense of the both the size and the magnitude of the job.
For the gym roof, I meant. I thought I thought I heard you say five C. Okay, thank you.
I have fifty sheets of paper, if you would like them.
I just wanted to make sure.
I thought I'd wait to bury you with that until September.
I don't want it.
Okay, five D, Madam Chair, is the after-school activities. We now have a skills club, a ukulele club, and the garden club meeting. And we have outside groups, the scouts, the basketball and hockey using the school in the evenings. And five E is contracts update. The Chair came in, and thank you very much, Madam Chair, for coming in today to sign an extension of our general education bus contract. We are adding two option years, two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five, two thousand twenty-five, twenty-six, at no additional cost from the third year that we awarded the contract. So that means for three of five years, the cost will be the same. So that's that's one of the advantages of doing the option. Companies like to do it because they are secure, and the we like to do it because we can avoid the bump in cost for a particular period of time. Today, I worked on the RFP, the Request for Proposals for the Food Service. What we are looking for is a three-year contract from twenty-two, twenty-three. That contract expires this year. So we need to get it out there. I'm not suspecting that there would be enormous competition. The two times I've done this since I've been here, both times only one company bid on it. So I'm I wouldn't be surprised if that was the same case. NRT, we are in the second year of our special education bus contract. And that will be expiring at the end of the twenty-two, twenty-three school year, which is next year. So we have to put that out on the street for proposals next year. And as you probably remember, the the Monster Contract with Swamp Scott, that runs from this July to June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-seven. So at at an annual increase of two and a half percent, which when members of the school committee and I negotiated it, we said, well, that was a pretty good deal. And now that we see what inflation is, we go, oh.
It's a really good deal.
It's a really good deal. So and that brings you up to date on the large contracts. Other than the obvious ones, there is a tentative agreement with the NTA Unit A. And we had the first organizational meeting with the NTA, the Nahat Teachers Association, Unit B, which is the unit that represents the paraprofessionals, educational support personnel. And we have three meetings scheduled for them. And Madam Chair, I'll send those to you.
Great. Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Parentozzi? Mr. Andrews, you are up.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Appreciate that. So for the principal's report for this evening, I was able to email you a document, and if you'd like to give me hosting privileges, I'd be happy to share my screen. Later in the presentation, I have some some data to share. And I wanted to start out by saying that we've added, you probably are familiar with iXL for math that we've had at the school. We've added ELA to the school program. We had a one-hundred-day free trial of the program, and I asked teachers how they felt about it, what, you know, if it was effective for them. And it's really been wonderful to have a piece that they could use with their class on an independent level, while the students were using their guided reading books, reading with a teacher for guided reading. They'd be able to finish sentences, spell words, and have real-time interaction using iXL ELA. And so we're really glad to have that added to the program. And related to that, I just wanted to share that the guided reading program that you approved last year has just been really popular with the teachers and the students. As a reminder, teachers are meeting with small groups and using real texts to read aloud, to discuss stories. And these are quite a bit different than we often find in published ELA programs, where the text is written by a a publisher, author, I guess you could say, in-house. These have great art, wonderful stories, and it's going over really well in the classrooms. So I just wanted to recognize that and say that we really appreciate the support for the Fountas and Penel Classroom series that you approved last year. And this iXL ELA component is a great component to add to it because it allows a teacher to work in those small groups, have full participation with the students they're working with, while the other students are meaningfully engaged with their content. And they rotate through these groups probably about every fifteen, twenty minutes.
Mr. Andrews, excuse me for interrupting. Are we supposed to be able to see a document that you're sharing?
I'm sorry, did I have sharing privileges? Great. Thank you for asking, Mr. Parentozzi.
Thank you.
Mr. Andrews, did you say that the iXL isn't the new curriculum that the school committee voted on last year to approve? That you're using, that you said uses actual passages? What was the name of that curriculum?
That's called Fountas and Penel Classroom. Unfortunately, it has a rather generic name for it overall, so.
Fountas and Penel Classroom?
Yeah, classroom. And, you know, they're seen as guided reading leaders in the field. And my.
So literacy and a reading program.
That's right. That's right. It looks like I'm not able to share this because I'm getting a bunch of blank screens. So I'm going to abandon this. Excuse me. Moving on, I want to let you know about MCAS. In on MCAS, we have the three, grade three ELA has completed theirs, and fourth grade is taking theirs today, and also took one yesterday. It went smoothly, no problems with all the Chromebooks. Everything worked well. And Miss Lur, I know, was very proud of his fourth graders for the the work they did. Tomorrow, we'll have fifth grade. And again, each grade level has two sessions for ELA. They'll have two for math, and fifth grade also has science, and that's later in May. I also want to let you know that the classrooms have been getting outside with the school gardening. Today was a great day. In the following days, we'll have additional classes where students are planting radishes, peas, and learning how to spell the words, learning about the parts of plants. And I'm facilitating that, but the classroom teachers are really the leaders in that, as well as the paraprofessionals in the school. For upcoming events, on May third, we'll have a school-wide assembly. It's going to start with a presentation by Ms. Esther Johnson, local resident. She'll be presenting a piece of artwork to the school as a donation. And it's a really wonderful painting that she shared with me and that she was offering to the school, and I thought it'd be nice to speak a bit about the history of the building, her connection to it, and also make the painting presentation formal. And so on a future committee meeting, I'll be asking for you to accept that, once that donation is made. And then she'll be kicking off the Zonda Dance Assembly with us, and this is where students will have a chance to learn hip-hop dances, listen to music, and really having a chance to, you know, build wellness and fun and music to a new a new style. So I think that'll be that'll be great for the students, really having had a it'll be split into two groups, most likely. And so we'll still have sixty students per group, but it'll be a really nice opportunity for all the students to get together in a regular way that we had pre-COVID. On May twelfth, we have the Climate Change Challenge at the school. Students are working on making houses that models of houses that are out of recycled materials that have renewable energy features in them, such as water catchment systems, solar panels, wind turbines. The sixth graders are working on robotic vehicles using Legos. And the third and fourth graders are planting plants and learning about how to grow plants under artificial lighting. These are all ways to work in a climate change society. And then on May fourteenth, we have Art, Nature, and Nahat, and this is part of the Nahat Arts Cultural Council's celebration on Lodge Park. And so the school will be there representing us and with dance, song, and poetry. And then finally, I wanted to update you on the Heritage Trail Enhancement Project. I've moved forward with my request for a twelve thousand dollar grant for planning purposes to design where the trail that I discussed in previous meetings would run. And this will be followed with a an additional year after that of installation. And so that would be completed within, project is two years right now. And then below on my report, I have dates of upcoming events. And that includes the sixth-grade field trip to the Swamp Scott Middle School. So students can become acclimated to going to the school, also learning about the bus stops and what's expected at the middle school. We have Field Day on the calendar, sixth-grade graduation. I've applied to use the town hall for the graduation ceremony, and looking forward to hearing back from the from the town councilors on that. And again, the final day for school is Friday, June seventeenth, with eleven-thirty dismissal. And that concludes my that portion of my report. Any questions, if there are any?
Well, will there will there be volunteers again for Field Day?
Absolutely. Yeah, we'd love to have help on that. As you know, it it takes a lot of stations and a lot of setup. And so I'm sure that Ms. Rouse will be sending out an email, asking folks to sign up.
Great.
Mr. Andrews, is the I just looked up Zonda Dance real quickly and saw that it's a guy, Chris, something, and he's the one that's coming in, performing, and leading the anti-bullying work?
That's my assumption, yes.
That's great. That is absolutely great. It's hard and yet critical for us to get diverse racial representation. And if we're, you know, if we're not, you know, this won't hire it. And if you can't get it in any other way, get that lived experience in for kids, it's so validating, not just for families like mine that are diverse, but every family. And so I am I really appreciate you choosing this music over many music, many different kinds of music that you could choose, and just shows that we are invested in this conversation about racial diversity year-round, not just in Black History Month. So how nice. Plus, hip-hop is damn fun. So how nice. Plus, hip-hop is damn fun for little kids. So, you know, because you get to move. We open every day, every day with hip-hop here. Anyway, good for you. Thank you.
Fantastic. Thank you for the support through you, Madam Chair. That was, one of, one of the goals here was to bring music to the school and to bring diversity as well, and fun. And I've asked Ms. Johnson to take part in it and the staff as well. So I'm really hoping that, you know, adults and kids will really, you know, have some great movement with it and really enjoy hearing it. So thank you for the support.
That's great.
Mr. Andrews, when does the ukulele program begin?
That should begin, actually, I asked Ms. Walsh, she'd be able to start this coming week. This coming Thursday. We have actually ordered and have received five ukuleles, tuning equipment included. And so we spoke about it, and it will be starting Thursday.
Wow. So we have five ukuleles. How many students are registered though for the program? Is that enough for everybody?
It is. It is, as far as I know. We have several students who have their own ukulele. And in addition, she let me know how many we need to order, and we are prepared.
That's really exciting. And then as far as other field trips and other kinds of just kind of more traditional community engagement at the school. Where, how does staff feel and how are people doing? You know, what's the sentiment? And what are you thinking about increasing, you know, field trips that we've traditionally done for the kids? And, and kind of community within the building? I have no pressure attached to this question, just curious about how people are doing, what people are thinking.
No, I think, just like all you are, all the parents probably are interested in getting back to normal. We're feeling more comfortable every day. We still, you know, I think, have some shell shock from the whole experience. But we are definitely wanting to adapt to the new, healthy, current, you know, expectations. And, and so, you know, in the conversation that I've had, we're really looking forward to move, moving forward safely in a healthy way and adding back as much as we can. And I think this year, you know, I'm in some pre-planning discussions with the music teacher on a potential concert coming up. And looking at what moving on looks like, looking at what sixth-grade, you know, events look like. So we're really, we want to push the envelope as much as we can comfortably.
Do you mean, do you mean shell shock from the pandemic or shell shock from taking a group of sixth graders to Canterbury Lake? I don't know.
Yeah.
Yeah, we just, you know, it feels like you're walking out of something with this pandemic. And you're just kind of checking left and right and making sure, does this make sense? Is this comfortable? How does everybody feel? And, and thanks for asking, but I think that's where we are right now. And we're just kind of moving forward together with it.
That's great. I can tell you that the kindergarten teacher has started inviting parents for mystery reader. And I'm super excited. I know Beth is excited, so.
That's so fun.
Yeah, I'm pretty excited.
It's really great. I know that, you know, just as if I step back from the committee role for a moment and just put on the parent hat, like, it is, it is just so nice to develop more relationships with, you know, the people who are involved in your, in your student's life. And I've always enjoyed that historically, and I'm sure that's a common sentiment. But so it's, it's great to think more about, you know, getting some of that kind of intimacy back. And, you know, the staff has been fantastic, in my opinion, about, you know, trying to reach out. And, you know, for example, my students in fourth grade, and we get these lovely emails every Friday. I really feel connected to what's going on in the classroom through those emails. They're fantastic. And teachers are really, in my experience, you know, very communicative whenever we reach out, and it's really great. So this is nothing. There's no criticism attached to this. That's nothing but compliment. But like, you know, it was so great back in the day when we could come in to the classrooms and help out on occasion and, and just kind of be more present. And I think it helps us as parents to be advocates for the, for the school to our kids. And it just, you know, you know what I'm saying. I don't need to say it to you, but you know. But it's just, it's great to have those relationships fostered in person whenever is safe and comfortable. And I'm not saying this with pressure attached to this. Just bring it up again. That's all. Just eager, eager to do it when it's right, and really grateful for everything that's been done so far.
Just, Madam Chair, thank you.
Just to reiterate process, we preview all of these activities with our nurse and the public healthers. And we get their input. Because they're much more aware of the obvious details that we may want to have in place this year until the pandemic really is, you know, really ends. One example is if we do have an indoor music presentation. The debate is, should we ask parents and guardians to wear masks? I'm not saying we will. I'm not saying we won't. But, you know, that's on the table. So there, you know, just one example. And, and by the way, Ms. Anderson, it's also known as Cannibal Lake, for obvious reasons.
It's great. It's great to think that conversations are happening about, you know, how could it be? You guys have been great about this the whole time. But, you know, how can we make these activities at the concert happen in a comfortable and safe way? And so thank you for continuing to work on that at all times. And like you're saying, with moving the needle whenever possible, whenever it feels right and when people are ready, because it's exciting and it's important. When we think about, you know, as a school committee, we think about student retention within the school. You know, when people do things like apply to charter or think about going other places, I think we've always, and you certainly have always thought about, you know, why and, and how. And so, you know, maintaining the relationships on as intimate a level as we can and really making it feel like our parents and guardians are truly part of this. You know, it happens so much more easily, obviously, if they're physically present. But I know there have been clear, you know, barriers to that, which are valid. But I know, as soon as we can, it feels good.
Scoops tonight is coming up as well. So the PTO, I know, is planning that. So we definitely have some, some things that, you know, to look forward to.
Awesome.
And then, Mr. Andrews, were you going to go through the iXL presentation also?
Yes, I'd like to. And I'm having difficulty sharing my screen, but I did email it to you. So if you'd be able to open it, I'd appreciate it. And it's just a six-page document. And the main goal for this presentation is to share some of the depth and information that I can get from iXL and that teachers can get from iXL on page.
Do you want to, if you want to make me host again, I can, I can try and share my screen and then I can just, you can just say, next slide.
Yeah, that's, that'd be fantastic. Let me get to the participants here. And let me get to and change hosts. Great. Thank you so much, Ms. Lane. I really appreciate that. So looking at the first slide here, this is kind of a, so this is what they give, what I wanted to share with you was what iXL gives to the school administration in terms of where the growth is, what, how the school is doing using the tool, and what the next steps might be. And it really was, it's been really fascinating for me to dig deeper into the, this iXL program today. And I can give you some anecdotes in a few moments. But starting off, we have school achievement summary. And this basically is, I don't find this particularly helpful, actually. It just tells you how many skills everyone's mastered. I'd like to know more about, you know, how are they doing compared to others typically? So if we can scroll down to go to the next slide. This is interesting because it tells you how many, how many hours we're at school and how, how many hours at home. Right now, we're mostly stressing doing it at school, and I'm asking teachers to do 15 to 20 minutes a day, which is what iXL recommends. If we can keep going down here, we can see the number of questions that we're trying to get each day. And this will give you an idea of the target for that time period. And so, you know, here we see that, you know, students are, you know, getting a lot of practice with this. Great thing about iXL is that the teacher doesn't have to correct it. The student knows right away if they got it right or wrong, and why. And so, and the teacher can also highlight the skills that the student should be practicing on. We're using this quite a bit during the Skills Club after school that the superintendent mentioned. To continue scrolling down. So here we see the number of skills mastered per student in each given time slot. And so students have, they might have, say, between 30 and 100 skills per grade. And so depending on the grade level, we're looking for them to, you know, reach a certain level at each period. And here we have the students that are mastering a certain number of skills and how, how many are proficient and how many mastered. And, you know, I'm really happy with the frequency that teachers are using it. You can see a couple empty spots. Those are vacations. So students, again, are mostly using it during the school day. But I do want to let teachers, I mean, parents know that, you know, it is available on, you know, weekends, off holidays, and also as homework. And so teachers are going to be applying this more for homework practice. Keep scrolling up. And here we see the kind of the breakdown, like I said before, about how many questions are answered at school or at home, and, you know, what the ratio is. And so right now, we're mostly using this as an in-school teaching tool. It's replacing morning work. So students are coming in, getting their Chromebooks open. The first 15 minutes of the day, they're having the practice on a skill that the teacher's identified. And then it gives the teacher feedback exactly on, you know, how the students are doing on that skill. Today, I noticed that Ms. Fideraro's class, they were all practicing on coins. And the previous day, they had a lesson on coins. So the first thing they did when they came in the morning was do practice on, you know, how much a nickel's for, what's a dime for. And it really gives the teacher feedback on, you know, who understood that and who's going to need intervention during the school day on that area. And keep scrolling up. It also is interesting because it gives you ideas about what teachers are engaged. And so I found this really helpful because I can see, you know, what classes have done their diagnostic. These are small samples where students can answer 10 questions in a day. And that helps refine the skills that they are given to practice. So it's kind of like a constant, small assessment. And I can find out, you know, how many classes are using this, and I can have a small conversation with the teacher. I notice your teachers, your students have been doing diagnostic. Let's have them get back into that. And, oh yeah, you know, thank you. It's helpful to find out where they are. And so this gives me an idea of what classes are engaged in iXL. And one more slide. This one, I haven't really found this too helpful right now. We need to do more on the diagnostic and I find them, the growth is better by, by student. And so I need to find out more about what this, what this chart's showing, because they really don't have a lot of metrics on here. You can see three squiggly lines. It looks pretty good in math. ELA, we just adopted. But I find it more helpful to go into the class level. And then today, I went into one of the classes that was working, and I was able to see all the students live, what they were doing, if they were on task, not on task, if they were moving forward. And I could even message them through this, through this tool. And they were really, they were really motivated by me sending them a message about how they were doing in different skills. And so I think for the next meeting, if I could, I would drill down a bit more into the growth of a sample class to give you an idea of what that really looks like for the teacher. So I just wanted to share tonight with that, with you, the, you know, what iXL has, what the different areas that we can look at are. And then I'll anonymize some of the class data, and we can drill down a little bit more into the details.
Mr. Andrews.
Yeah, thank you.
Sure thing. I'm so glad that we've, we've got it for ELA as well now.
Yeah, that was my, that was going to be my question. I love iXL personally. My son, not so much, but I love it. It's a great tool. I'm happy to hear that ELA is being offered too.
And, you know, the, the real hard part about differentiation is that teachers need to identify what they need to give to each student. And so if we want to really differentiate, we have to give teachers tools that can allow them to customize the learning. And so they can have a fourth grader get onto a fifth grade skill. They can get into what students need to be pulled out of iXL and meet for a group of five students, and the other 15 can keep working on iXL. And so anytime the students are on iXL, the teachers with five or six students, either doing intervention, doing enrichment, or doing a book study. So it doesn't decrease the amount of one-to-one interaction with the teacher. It actually increases the quality, I think, of the interaction. So you don't have 20 to one. You have five to one. And then you have 15 focusing on a different kind of feedback, if that makes sense.
Yeah, it's great. Will iXL be available over the summer for students if they wanted to log in?
And they have summer learning plans. And so I'm really excited to look at those and see, you know, if, if, you know, to share this with families so that we can really, you know, close any other gaps that we have. And that concludes my report. I have dates at the bottom there for your review. And let me know if you have any questions about those.
All right, we can move on to community correspondence. So the chat is actually open. If anybody on the call would like to make a comment from the community, and I'll just ask the members of the school committee if anybody has had any community correspondence that they would like to share, that they could share right now.
I have not.
I also have not had any correspondence.
Neither have I. I, I kind of do. Kind of. And I was going to have them get on the horn tonight, but they both ended up in bed by the time I got home. But my sons, in a semi-formal way, came and asked why the Johnson Elementary School does not have a pet parade like the Hadley School in Swampscut. And they are working on a proposal for a pet parade for Nahant for next year. So things to come. It would be outdoors. And, and I had a whole conversation, everything has to be leashed. And they said, well, so-and-so has a tarantula. And I said, well, unless that tarantula has a little tarantula leash. It's not, I'm not, I, I, as a school committee member, cannot in good faith, support that. And I said, if I felt like I could, Mr. Parentozzi would probably shut that right down. So, but we might have, we might have a pet parade proposal coming. So let me know if you're excited or horrified by this idea. I think it's wonderful, and especially since it was brought up by the kids. Right. I might still make it into like a project and say, at school committee, you, you have to, I can't present for you. You have to come next time. So we'll see if I can get them to do that.
Okay, seeing no comments from the community other than Beth's adorable children. We'll move on to new business. So I can share the performance evaluation for Superintendent Parentozzi that was completed. And I did forward this to the members of the community committee before tonight's meeting, just to share with the community. No big surprises. Mr. Parentozzi had stellar markings, so. Mr. Parentozzi had stellar markings. So for those who are not familiar, uh, the different grading systems are unsatisfactory, needs improvement, proficient and exemplary. And, um, in the area of instructional leadership, Superintendent Parentozzi was proficient. In the area of management and operations, Superintendent Parentozzi is exemplary. In the area of family and community engagement, Superintendent Parentozzi was proficient. In the area of, uh, professional culture, Superintendent Parentozzi was proficient. And we are, um, and accumulated an overall rating based upon, you know, where he, uh, fell in the different areas. Most of them were between proficient and exemplary and his overall rating is, uh, exemplary. And we're grateful for all the work, uh, Superintendent Parentozzi does for the school and the community. And so I wanted to share that feedback. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much, Madam Chair. It's a, it's a great pleasure to, uh, work for this school committee in this community.
Um, and then next on new business, we have the summer programs update.
Yes, Madam Chair. It, it looks like we have twenty-nine parent guardians who have signed their children up for, uh, our four-week summer program. Not meaning that all twenty-nine will be there every day. But right now we have twenty red, twenty-nine registrants. In terms of the Island Roots registration, uh, last week I asked the, um, executive director of Island Roots to, uh, give me an update on the number of students. And it was a disappointing number, um, fewer than five. And I, I hesitate to, to think that's accurate because parents seem to be talking the program up.
Yeah, I can actually share some information. So, and, um, I think it was just today or yesterday that we got a message from the Island Roots program that they decided to cancel their summer program. So I don't know if you were aware, but they have at least let, so I would, I was one of the, I was one of the five. But, um, they, they actually officially made the decision not to have the summer program. And they, uh, notified the families that had enrolled. I will, and I, and I give those feedback to Jesse. Um, I, I think there was just a lot of confusion about the different programs that were being made available. Um, you know, I myself, I didn't realize that when I signed up my kids for the Johnson School Program, that there was a separate signup for the Island Roots. So I signed up like right before their cutoff for the date. And there was a lot of communication. I mean, this wasn't communication with us as a school committee members. It was more just, you know, uh, correspondence amongst the community, um, community members. There was a lot of confusion about where to sign up, where to find the links, what was available. And so, um, you know, I think just, you know, potentially looking to some ways that it could be better advertised next year and a little bit more clearly, um, what the expectations were for people signing up by certain deadlines. Because I think there would have been a lot more interest.
One thing that it might have come home, but me, and maybe I missed it, but one thing that might be helpful for something like this is like a, a little Pam Flit, like a hard copy Pam Flit to go home for parents and guardians. I think people, again, we, you know, people get information all different ways and everybody learns differently and all that, but, um, I think a lot of parents get overwhelmed when planning summers for their, their families. And, um, sometimes just being able to look at a piece of paper and say, okay, this is, this one's free, this one costs this much and kind of lay things out. I'm old fashioned, showing my age, but sometimes that could, that might help. Uh, so if we're having trouble where some people feel confused and some people thought they're getting information, maybe if it comes to people on different ways, um, next time for Island Roots included. And I could send an email to, to them about that too.
Is there a risk that, um, Gina, I'm only in on one thing you said, which is, but that, um, I wonder if people thought they signed up and they didn't sign up. Is there any risk for the twenty-nine families that are signed up for the Johnson program? That any of them think that they're automatically enrolled in the Island Roots? Or not?
Yeah, so I had, I had shared that, that thought with Mr. Andrews as a parent, not as a school committee member, just, um, because there was, uh, some communication that they might have to cancel the John, you know, before they decided to officially cancel. And so I'd reached out to Mr. Andrews. And, and he sent out an email to all the families that had signed up for the Johnson School part of it to say, are you also interested in the Island Roots? Here's where you sign up.
Okay.
And if I can add, then we also sent, uh, in the last newsletter, I had Island Roots on top and then Johnson School underneath. Yeah. So that in the newsletter they would see, because in the original one, we had Johnson School, click here, Island Roots, click here. And the Island Roots one actually took you to more information. It didn't take you to a signup link either. So, um, I think it was, um, it, it sent you to a document that Island Roots had. Um, whereas ours sent you to a Google form, where you filled out the form.
And I mean, I found it a little bit confusing. I also find the Lynch Van Otterlie confusing and I find the JCC signup confusing. So I think it's endemic. I also, to be honest, like Gina had to literally help walk me through the snack shack signup. Which is tremendously embarrassing. So this might be more of a commentary on me, uh, these days. But, um, I do think summer camp forms are pretty confusing. I hate the entire process, but it's necessary.
Yeah, the only, the only other thing I'll say is that the difference between the one week that was all Johnson, I mean, the, the, the one week that was all Island Roots and then the breakdown of the combined weeks. And even for somebody who, like, sits at these meetings and gets the information ahead of time, it was really, it, it was a little bit tricky to figure out what was what. And I wonder if some people thought that the cost was always like going to be on the higher side, which was when it was a full day Island Roots. So I don't know, we could maybe just ahead of time have family, my, my advice is maybe just have a family or two look at it, you know, as, as somebody that doesn't have information ahead of time next year, if they decide to do this and, and ask them their understanding of what is being outlined in the information packet. Because I found it really confusing. And the, and it is unfortunate because I can tell you from the communication with other families there. I think there would have been a lot, definitely way more than five people that were interested in participating. So I don't know what their cutoff number is. I mean, if, how many people are attending the Johnson School Camp? Nineteen?
Twenty-nine.
Oh, twenty-nine, uh, thirty.
Thirty-nine.
But I mean, obviously I don't think it would be thirty, you know, because that's free, but it'd be more than five. I don't know what their cutoff is.
I'd imagine, it, it, I'd imagine the minimum staffing is two, if I may say. And so, um, you know, that's what we always had. It was two staff members on, on site. And then that gives you a ratio of probably, you need one to, you know, one to ten, one to fifteen anyway. So it's got to be somewhere twenty to thirty probably for, um, you know, back in the napkin math.
All right. Um, any other updates on the summer program? Um, Mr. Andrews, did you want to talk about the applications that are in the packet?
I'd be happy to, Madam Chair. Thank you for the opportunity. Uh, we had two field trip requests on the, uh, docket for this evening. Um, one isn't, uh, both are out of state and that's why they were for you tonight. Um, the first one that I, um, was hoping to put before you was to Saco Maine. And this is a trip that our, um, students, we hope would take every other year or a student graduating from Johnson School had the experience before they graduate. During the COVID period, we have, weren't having this opportunity, but we like to restart it in the fall. It's a science trip. It's two nights. Uh, we would take next year's fifth and sixth graders to the ecology school, which in the past have been at Ferry Beach. Um, I would go and the, um, fifth and sixth grade teachers would go. It's a really wonderful experience for the fifth and sixth grade class. Uh, we take a coach bus. Uh, we're two nights overnight there and three days of programming around ecology, composting, um, science, uh, field studies. And it's really a, a nice program that we've seen in part in many years. And so, um, I'd appreciate, um, the school committee's support on this, uh, request.
Mr. Andrews, um, just because, um, I am aware of, um, that one of the application had references to an EpiPen, um, in looking at kind of the agenda and the schedule for the overnight field trip. Um, it looks like that there's a family style meal and that might not be suitable for everybody um, in attendance. And so what would be the plan for children who need to have a special meal?
Sure. Thanks, thanks for the, uh, question through, Madam Chair. Uh, the, uh, the school, we, we've been there before. And the school is very, um, careful to take care of a wide range of allergies. Uh, they primarily service, uh, students and school groups. And, um, I know that they would have, um, they, they actually announce at the, at the, at the meal. We have a really fun time announcing what the meal is going to be. Um, and so if there happens to be an allergy, allergen in there, um, they, they make it known then. And then they also, um, have someone on staff who has a list of students who have, um, al- allergies. And they, um, check in with them. Um, and so they cover everything from full vegan meals to, um, kosher to, to everything in between. And they're really careful about it.
Cause I think one of the things just experiencing that in general is that, you know, whatever, you know, whatever it is to try to make it be as good or appealing, um, for, for that child or those children that have that issue. So if there's going to be cupcakes, you know, there's cupcakes that everybody can have, that sort of thing, you know? Um, cause that's kind of difficult on the, on the kids who can't sometimes.
Uh, Madam Chair, through, absolutely, absolutely. And, and they do it in such a thoughtful way. Um, and their default is really to, um, you know, serve food that's healthy, delicious, and, um, you know, welcoming to a wide range of students. Um, and I don't think we did have cupcakes.
Okay. All right.
Lots of whole grains, I'll tell you that.
Yeah.
But it was great. It was great. It's great. Um, so I, I, and I can give you, I'd be happy to give you more detail and, um, school committee more detail. I wanted to put it to you tonight just to, um, think about the, the interstate travel piece.
Yeah, great. I think it's wonderful that this is possible.
It's great too. And Mr. Andrews, um, at the, at the sleepaway camp in particular, um, I know at, at our school, we've tried to be really sensitive to, you know, having facilities that, um, make people feel comfortable no matter what their, you know, gender identity might be. So having like, um, you know, bathroom that's not specific to, you know, boys and girls. And that's not as easy to do everywhere that you go. Um, but when, you know, it's somewhere where people might be sleeping away, if there are students who, you know, identify, you know, as male or female, um, you know, it's a different gender as they were assigned at birth. I imagine, I, I would hope that the administration would be, would be happy to work with the families to figure out what the most comfortable situation would be for that student in a situation like this.
Yeah, absolutely. We sure would. We sure would. And, uh, it's nice to have, you know, um, both men and women supervising the trip. And students, um, I'm sure, you know, if they, you know, where they feel comfortable being, um, really they'll be. And, um, you know, in, in addition, you know, we've had different, different scenarios about what we needed to do. And it's nice that we have a small school that we can really customize, uh, the program for the, the students that we have.
It's wonderful.
One, um, thought on that awesome comment, um, to Sherlock is that, um, so my daughter is schooling my sixteen-year-old daughter, who's very active as a trans ally, um, as an ally for trans kids. Uh, she is schooling me on many things, including, um, how to best support trans students. One thing that she's pushing is this idea of like non-binaryism, which means it's, you know, I think the, the trends in my lifetime was about, you know, really feeling like you identify more as the other gender. Um, this latest sort of world that we're in is about non-binary, no gender. And, um, which as a woman is fun for being a woman and a lesbian, like, that's a little hard, but, um, for me personally. But, um, just wanting to like, you know, maintain that. But in terms of inclusion, really important to create this space for students who identify as, um, as non-binary. So with the bathroom example, I think having a space that is non-gendered, right? Is, um, is actually more inclusive. Um, and so, you know, having, there might be like a specific space that's a, a women's room. And then one that's designated at different points in time or at all, like as a, just a non-gendered space might be, um, you know, the way that you can sort of, you know, carve down on a, on a, on a field trip. So just some thoughts.
Great point, um, Madam Chair, through you. We, they do have, um, co- common areas that are open in the evening, uh, where the nurse's station is. And they were actually pretty proactive when we were there last, just to notice that it was, uh, non, you know, it was gender neutral bathroom. And that was in the common area that you could access anytime of the night. It wasn't in the dorm because each school, and actually they have a whole new facility. So I haven't even been there yet. Um, so they probably have this already worked out and they were in an old dorm facility. Um, but they had it worked out there too. Uh, so they're very mindful of this.
Great, thank you. I'd be happy to make a motion to support the, uh, in favor of supporting the field trips as outlined in our packet, the out-of-state field trips.
And I'll second that.
Madam Chair, if I may be so bold, could we have a separate motion on each because
Yeah, yeah.
Different. One is a out-of-state and one's an overnight, right?
Yeah, sure. I'd make a motion, um, in favor of supporting the out-of-state overnight field trip to Saco Maine for the fall of two thousand twenty-two for grades five and six.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you, Ms. Karris. All in favor of approving the motion as outlined? Ms. Anderson, Ms. Careless, Ms. Sherlock, Ms. Sam, myself. Motion carries.
I'll also make a motion to approve the, um, out-of-state field trip to Salem, New Hampshire for grade six.
I'll also second that one.
All right. Any discussion on that one? All in favor? Ms. Sherlock, Ms. Karris, Ms. Anderson, Ms. Dan, myself. All right, motion carries. Uh, and I think that's the end for new business. Um, Mr. Grand, how's he do have a personnel update for us?
Yes, Madam Chair, I have, uh, two. Uh, I want the school committee to know that I am, um, with your support, going to be posting a head custodian position. That would not be a third custodian that would be inviting either of the two custodians who work for us for a slight, um, salary increase, an hourly rate stipend to act as the head custodian. Um, there's, there's two things that in my mind. Number one, um, we need somebody to be in a leadership position vis a vis the facility and other custodial things down the road because, uh, my assumption would be that whoever the superintendent is, when I am no longer the superintendent, would not have the facility background or the, the construction background that I do. So this would be an opportunity for me to bring, uh, one of the two custodians uh, along with me as we deal with the issues of the building and the contractors and bidding, um, next year. Um, which would be at the, at the least the amount of time that I will continue as superintendent. Uh, two, it is, um, in my opinion, um, in my opinion, um already being done by them in a haphazard way, because I'm only here two days a week. Um, for example, one of them's calling Verizon, one of them is interfacing with the, the um exterminator. And so in order to collect it into a a more efficient system, uh, one of them should actually be doing it, and of course, should be gaining a remuneration for that work.
That's right, Paul.
Okay.
Thank you for always looking into the future and anticipating our future needs. That's great.
Now, you're, you're very welcome. And on a uh more personal and a happier note, uh Linda Layman today uh was giving a party by the staff after eleven years as serving as our part-time team chair. Today was her last day of work. And obviously, we wish Linda a long, healthy, happy, wondrous uh retirement. Again, like, like uh someone else we know, uh, this is not her first retirement.
Um, is there any business from the committee? All right, um, I don't think that we have anything to discuss in executive session. Um, so if uh somebody would like to make a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn at nine, ten PM.
I'll second the motion made by Ms. Dan.
Ms. Anderson, all in favor of adjourning the meeting? All right, have a good night, everyone.
Thanks, everyone.
Night, thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.